Same things, we're looking at it with that liquidated number versus the expended number. Um, your county number is going to always be the same because we get your actuals right off the bat. We're always just a little bit behind when it comes to the sub recipients because they have to submit reporting. And then we have to go back and forth with them and make sure it's accurate. So when you're looking at your hundred percent complete, it's showing that there's ninety-eight total projects. Twenty-eight of those are going to be county projects, seventy of those are your sub recipient projects. But again, that's just the money out the door. Realistically, your sub recipient projects are closer to about forty that are at a hundred percent completion. At fifty percent or more, you have eleven county projects and then you have about twenty-two. Less than fifty percent, you have five county projects. And then it's showing that you only have six subs that are um expended at less than fifty percent. But again, because you had low risk and those dollars went out the door at the beginning, that number is off. You have closer to about thirty sub recipients that are under the fifty percent uh spending range. And then uh for your zero percent, you have eight subs realistically and then one county project. And we will see the county project change um as that was the um record retention. So there will be an expenditure on that coming up. So that gives us kind of an overview and the reason that we're talking about why this is important and the caveats of this is kind of our little shock factor today is thinking about, we are almost to twenty twenty-six, which is very hard to believe. We've been doing this for a very long time, but we're only as of today, four hundred and forty-four days from December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So we are getting a lot more aggressive in making sure that this spending is going out the door by our sub recipients. And it's why our desk reviews and site visits are so important right now um to make sure that they're adhering to their timeline. Or if they need to make some sort of modification, we're well aware of what that will look like. Um, because by the time we get into December or January, if we have subs that haven't had any movement, we're going to be coming to this body and saying, what kind of action do we want to take? Do we want to be more aggressive in our monitoring? Do we want to have regular touch points, you know, every week with them? Or if they don't spend by a certain date, are we taking a more aggressive action and taking funds back? Um, because that reallocation process does just take a little while. But so I wanted to kind of remind everyone, um, it sneaks up on us. It did in twenty twenty-four and it will in twenty twenty-six as well. Um, but this just gives us a good thing to look at. All right, this is the fun stuff. We'll talk about your sub recipients. Thank you. This is Habitat for Humanity. So obviously they're a nonprofit organization. They received funding through um Oklahoma County ARPA to uh assist with down payment assistance. So they have a construction that's going on called Corner Streak Housing Community. Um, and so it's a whole community area that they are helping to provide the down payment assistance to low income individuals. So that they're able to actually partake in home ownership. So far, when we had had their uh site visit with them, they had been able to already provide funding for three families. Um, but with the amount that they received in their ARPA grant, they are believing that with just the ARPA dollars, they'll be able to support fifteen to twenty families in down payment assistance. Luther Fire, this is kind of a twofold. They did a couple of different things. They have number one, their fire engine, which is what you're seeing there with your volunteer uh fire department. The only uh paid position in the town of Luther at your fire department is your chief. So these are all volunteers that come and take their time to protect the community. Uh, along with the fire engine that they purchased, they uh they got these self-contained breathing apparatuses. So what those allow them to do is go into these high level dangerous, they're considered dangerous life and health situations and be more protected in the field. So whether it's from fumes or smoke and things like that, but allows them to go into the field and be more protected. And then with the fire tanker that they had purchased, the biggest issue that they tend to see in the community is um when they get to a fire, not having enough water, which makes sense. And so this tanker allows them to bring three thousand gallons of water versus seven hundred and fifty. So it's a very big jump. This is Project One Eleven. They actually just closed out when we did their site visit. They had fully expended all of their dollars. They are a very interesting organization and that the community puts their requests into the portal. So they connect with local um churches and uh like uh, what are they called? The Department of uh Health Human Services. And those individuals, those caseworkers or those families in churches go directly into the portal and submit a request. So those are examples of requests. We've we've blocked out any identifying information. Um, but those are examples of requests and it can range from all sorts of things. This could be, I need a stroller. This could be, I need formula. Um, and with the ARPA dollars, they have been able to provide um services for a hundred and fifty-two families. So that made a massive difference in that community. Whiz Kids of Oklahoma. So their overarching uh nonprofit is dedicated to supporting children in high poverty areas. So specifically those that are attending Title One schools that are below the reading level. So what they are doing is they have volunteers that come in and they do one-on-one coaching with these students to help them gain the reading level that they need to be more successful. So far, they have brought in uh with the ARPA dollars, starting in January of twenty twenty-five. They have been able to serve an average of five hundred and thirty-eight students weekly so far. So that is very incredible. The Oklahoma Opry. This is a interesting one as well. What they have done is they've gone ahead and consolidated all of their programming into one facility. So this is the first time in forty-eight years that all of the service offerings that they have will actually be in the same location. And one of the big caveats that is important with this project is they have two very special beneficiary groups and that includes children and veterans. So children that are able to receive uh reduced services uh or discounted services here are those that are on free and reduced lunches. So they're able to get music lessons at a very nominal fee. And then also veterans are able to come in and receive free music courses and instruments as well. Peaceful Family Solutions. This is your nonprofit organization, the community that is really focused on ch- children that are impacted by addiction. So these are students whose parents have been going in and out of the criminal justice system. And what they're trying to do is have a peer-to-peer support model to help these kids on a day-to-day basis. They bring the students out to a uh summer like week program. And they're able to go through these therapies with one another and they're able to have the students talk to one another and have that shared experience to really say, hey, you're not the only one that is experiencing something like this in your family. And this is a safe community for you to be able to participate in. So far with the ARPA dollars, they've been able to do two of those therapeutic day camps um with a total of fourteen youth at each one. So so far they had already served over thirty-two uh students and they thought just with, it was a small amount of ARPA dollars that they thought, we'll only get to about twenty. Um, but really actually were able to exceed that amount. Lily and Timber Farms. This one is very exciting. We, I was able to actually go out to their um little site as well. So what they are working on is a holistic approach to health and mental health. So when you go out to their facility, not only are they helping people understand how to grow and be one with nature in the garden. They are also offering services such as therapies, counseling, and then they do like yoga and tai chi as well to kind of bring the whole body and mind together to serve the community as a whole um on top of just uh also providing food access as well. This is the Field in Futures. They are a school sports initiative-based program. So this is led by the actual company Field in Futures, but they partnered with Oklahoma City Public Schools. And again, these are schools that are um typically a little bit low income or not have received the level of funding in the past they would have liked. And so what they're able to do is really perform um and provide transformation efforts to revitalize their athletic infrastructure. So this not only provides safe space, but accessibility. It allows for them to get bleachers so that families can come watch the students. It provides a safe place to have lunch, to play their games. They've been able to update their dugouts and things like that as well. So this has really been an opportunity for them to create a school-connected play space um and provide provide that safe, high-quality environment for athletes. And they have some very interesting studies, just as a side bit, on the impact that being able to have access to these spaces and also being a student athlete, what that can do for your grades and your success as you're going through um the high school process as well. This is the Millwood Public Schools. They're going to sound very similar to the previous one because this was also for a facility improvement. They were able to get a softball field and the most exciting piece of this, I, it's hard to see, but it's in that top corner that I called it out. This is the first time in two years that they are able to have a varsity softball team because they now have the resources to do so. So that is completely fundamentally changing the lives of those young girls that are able to participate in this. But it's not just for the varsity teams. Of course, the the field is used for PE services, it's used for after-school things. Um, and then their their younger JVs and is and men are allowed to use it as well. Um, so completely for everyone at that Title One school, that was a very exciting tidbit that the girls were very excited to say, we have a team again. The City of Bethany did a sidewalk improvement. So what they did was they improved about three hundred feet of new sidewalk and it was strategically connecting um residents to essential local services. So this connects them to the All Abilities Playground, which if you've never been out there, it is incredible. Um, that was not funded with ARPA dollars, the playground itself, but it is very, very wonderful. Um, and then the, this also allows people to connect to the Y N C A, the municipal court, the police department and city hall through one connected strip of services. So it really keeps people um safely in order to have that welcoming community to get to um each of their individual services. All right, and this is the Oklahoma Railway Museum. Overall, they are undergoing a very large-scale transformation at the railway um museum. But the ARPA dollars specifically are going towards what you're seeing here, this front uh building. They are focusing on the restoration and the repair of the depot. Um, so that is not the finished product. This is the in-work piece of it. So they are working with the ARPA dollars to improve the interior and the exterior. They are making it ADA compliant. They are putting in the HVAC systems. And so this restored building will end up serving as the museum's main interest when people are coming in to provide services. And what I learned was the insane amount of um traffic they get for their Polar Express event that they get in December. So when they actually have this uh functioning uh ticket booth, I think you'll see that that is really wonderful. And right off of that Route sixty-six area, it's great for y'all's tourism as well. That was fast, but that walks us through your subs. Does anybody have questions about any of them? Awesome. We'll jump over real quick just to remind everybody about reporting updates. So I touched on this at the beginning, we're we're going through quarterly reporting. The way that this works is we had held a compliance webinar with our sub recipients. We always do two weeks or so before we ask them to submit their reporting. They were asked to submit their reporting to us in the first week of this month, so the first week of October. We are now going through and making sure that what they submitted to us through our portal actually adds up. Sometimes there's a little bit of a discrepancy when we get to totals. So we just have that little bit of back and forth before we actually put it into the treasury portal to make sure that it's accurate. These are the types of information as always that we're collecting when we're going through this process. Your authorized dollar amount, what they've actually expended. Um, if they're having any issues with their project, this is where we ask them to provide that information as well. So we can follow up with them, like, hey, are you having an issue finding a vendor? Did you have an issue finding um supplies? And so this gives us some insight. If we see that maybe they were spending a little less than we thought they were going to be at that specific point in time, we have insight into why. And then this is again, just another one of those thinking about, hey, we only have four hundred and forty-four days until the end of twenty twenty-six. Um, what that actually looks like too in reporting is there's only two annual reports left at this point. And there is going to be only six quarterly reports left, including the one that I will be submitting at the end of this month. So in total, there's only eight, so it will be happening very, very quickly. Um, but it's been a really, really like rewarding process and we will continue to update you guys on sub recipients as we do our visits. But that is all I have for you today.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Receive the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Is there a second to receive the report?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, is Iron Mountain still having difficulty at this point? Okay, go ahead. Apparently, Iron Mountain is having some difficulty on their end. Uh, so let's move to item number five, October twenty twenty-five, B O C C Employee of the Month.
I will make a motion to accept option A and option B.
And I'm second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Laura. I guess we should have taken longer.
Okay, now we're back to uh Iron Mountain. If they can connect. Wait just a minute.
Good morning. This is Chris Whitaker with Iron Mountain.
Morning, Chris.
Hi. Good morning.
Okay, item number three is a status report regarding the development implementation of Oklahoma County Records Retention Policy. So whenever you're ready, Chris.
Great. Good morning, everyone. Thanks as always for the opportunity to provide updates on the project. Uh, so first and foremost, again, wanted to uh just to thank the project team we've worked with for all the work we've completed to date. And um in terms of where we are with the project. So we now have a uh completed uh records retention schedule. Um, one thing I'd want to say is that the retention schedule is really a uh, really a living, breathing dynamic sort of document. So uh, in fact, I'm going to share it while I'm speaking, if you all can see my screen. Um, that really captures the different types of records and documents that are utilized um across the county.
Chris.
Um, with, yeah, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. Um, this agenda item, we're talking specifically about the policy. So if we could
Okay.
pull up the policy so that way the committee could review that first. This is the agenda item. And then the next agenda item is to discuss the retention schedule.
Sure, all right. So I've gone ahead and pulled it up. Everyone should see the policy. Let me, in fact, I'll try to make it a little bit larger. Okay, got it. All right, can everyone see the policy okay?
Yes, we're good.
All right, so um, so in terms of the policy, uh again, it is a uh, the draft. Um, looking through sort of some of the edits and some of the uh updates that have been made to date. I'll kind of uh talk through those and I can kind of walk through those as we go forward, I guess, for for feedback. Let me kind of continue to move forward. All right. Yep. So really in this first section around the purpose and scope, there's sort of a couple of uh items here that have been updated for the draft. Um, uh version of this policy more around a couple of items around purpose and also in terms of the uh of the scope. Just kind of walking through here. Uh, let's see. Um, I'll, again, in the uh next se- section around definitions, definition of what a record is, what official records are, what non-records are, um, because everything is a, is not an official record. Specifically around things like that.
Chris, I'm going to pause you there. So on page three, if you'll scroll back up to the last one, um, only the committee members have seen this, Records Retention Policy as of now. And so they each have a copy of it. Um, but for purposes of those that are um in the audience today and of course those that are um calling in to watch this. Um, I would like to clarify a couple of things in regards to um what this means on each page. And so the purpose, of course, um, is in keeping with Oklahoma County's ultimate goal of becoming a high-performance organization. And the purpose of this is to establish a policy to ensure satisfac- satisfaction of legal and regulatory requirements. And so on that first section, if it's okay with the committee, the only thing that we're revising is just a typo and comma. Is that okay with you? We'll just go page by page so that way we can submit this to our DA for final approval. Does that sound a good way of handling it? Okay, on one point two, the scope, um, the change that we made um in regards to the policy and subsequent policies and procedures and standards adopted by the Records Management Program are intended to apply to all records created or received in conjunction with the operations of Oklahoma County, regardless of media or format. All physical locations where records are maintained, including firms and other individuals acting as agents, all employees, contractors, agents, businesses, users, subsidiaries that create, receive, manage, or use Oklahoma County records. And then um it highlights in here on the line item, I know it's hard to see on that screen, is that in the future, all records, management, policies, procedures, and standards must be, must be issued by the Policy and Governance Committee as defined in this policy. Do the committee members agree? Okay, we can move on to page two. And then if, Chris, you just want to explain those roughly, in general, the key definitions? And then I can talk through any of the revisions. Does that sound like a good plan?
That sounds great.
Okay.
That sounds
Just because you're, you can't see. So I just want to be helpful. So on page four, number two, key definitions.
Yes, so in terms of the key definitions, starting with item one, uh two dot one, uh definition of a record. So um formally speaking, the way that the the policy is defined, uh, records are defined as information created or received by any Oklahoma County business unit in the course of its business. Um, records are not specific to any particular media or format. They may take the form of paper, documents, forms, rec- uh reports, correspondence. Um, they could also be digital files or computer files, such as spreadsheets, database, databases, word process documents, or information in other forms such as uh videotape or photographs, you know, digital images, et cetera. I think the key sort of here is that really what defines a record is is really the content and not the format in which that record is is rendered in. Um, taking it a step further, official records are defined as the complete and final record that contain information that requires retention for business or legal reasons or what is also often called the most authoritative version um of a of a record as well. Um, examples might include original invoices, signed contracts, uh, you know, original receipts. Again, the most authoritative or the quote-unquote official version of of that record. And then for item two dot three, for non-records, uh, non-records typically are records that are really not required attention for business or legal reasons. Um, it's typically, uh, non-record is typically not necessary to satisfy an organization's legal or administrative requirements around retention. Generally, they're copies. So for example, I might have a uh contract or a copy of a contract that is the official record. I print a copy of it to attend a meeting or just to kind of mark up for some other purpose. Um, that sort of paper version that I created um is really a non-record. Or again, it's a copy of a record and typically those are disposed of in shred bins or or very quickly. You know, after it, it uh serves its purpose. So um, again, that's really, again, that's sort of the definitions around uh records, so, or the definition of a record. So I'll stop there. Any questions, thoughts?
Any questions or changes, page number four?
Sorry. Uh, just in terms of the the uh development of this, were all appropriate uh state statutes either uh viewed or referred to or anything before this was developed?
Yes, they were. So we did uh uh refer to uh state uh statutes around record-keeping uh to determine some of the required periods. Um, there were also some groups um that we spoke with um across the county that had uh policies um that they had developed um as well, which were incorporated into the uh, into the retention schedule. You know, which often included sort of business reasons around um, you know, uh requirements for how long the record should be kept as well.
Okay, I have an additional uh question. I see our sheriff department is here, our undersheriff and also our uh general counsel for the sheriff department is here and they are actually looking, they are in the back. Uh, so did you visit with uh the sheriff department?
Um, we did, uh, let me, we did um spend a little time with them. Let me go grab my notes. Um, we did spend a little
So Michelle, um
Yeah, my question is more loosely related than just the sheriff's department. Uh, if there are departments other than B O C C departments that may have their own records retention policy and schedules, uh, being through the direction of their own elected official or what have you, can those uh policies and schedules uh also be incorporated into this document? So I'm talking about sheriff, county clerk, treasurer, all the other elected officials other than the commissioners.
Correct. So what we have been doing. Cody, Cody's been here since the beginning of this, um, whenever we had discussed this in policy and governance. So what this has looked like from um the time that we determined to hire Iron Mountain is that we've had weekly uh meetings in order to discuss um, you know, the the policy as well as the retention schedule itself, which is the next agenda item. Uh, they have reached out uh to every single department, including the other elected officials' departments. And so uh the other elected officials, the um, the county clerk, the court clerk, the assessor, and the treasurer gave us a copy of their policies. Um, and of course, the retention schedule and policy that we have defined for today are related to uh B O C C departments. And then also assisted Jim, who was very instrumental, um, our undersheriff, uh, undersheriff Anderson, um, in regards to communication of what uh records we retain, um, as well as how long they should be kept. Um, the policy itself uh has not been distributed out to all of those departments. That was to be discussed in in policy and governance in regards to what that looks like. But the retention schedule has been discussed, um, you know, intensely with every single department over the past, I think I want to say eight months. Chris, is that right? Six months? And so, but I'll let Jim speak to that because he's been really instrumental and and bringing up a lot of questions as well.
Yeah, I I would, I would think that if the 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 general policy, retention schedule, whatever, um, looking at them both as a combined document, if the, if that can contemplate the statutory requirements and then allow language in the body of the policy that allows any elected official or director of any of any whatever um to maintain records a little longer be- beyond that, uh, I I don't see any damage with. Um, because, you know, each one of them is going to know better for historical context, what they need to go back and reference and, you know, things of that nature. So um, I'd, I'd, I tried to chop down the portion that they contemplated for us. I tried to make it substantially smaller. You know, I use, I I I injected some language that that works for us. That's, that maybe worked for a, you know, a previous um customer of Iron Mountain. Um, so yeah, I just keep it as simple as possible, uh, you know, establish a a minimum as the policy and then allow the electives to to go beyond that if they feel they, if they wish, you know, and they have the means and the the space of of the financials to to store electronic there or whatever. So that was, that was my original thought. My, my biggest drive for this and kind of where this started a few years ago is we have pallets of jail records from the early nineties that I I desperately want to get rid of in the basement of Kraus, but I can't because this, this policy doesn't exist yet. That was the answer from the district attorney's office, so. So, so the bar for us is pretty low. I think once this is established, we're obviously going to be able to get rid of those. So um, yeah, I'm just looking forward to getting it done and getting rid of some stuff, so.
Another thing um is that Iron Mountain, as to answer the question in regards to um our Oklahoma State statutes, they cited where they found uh their legal team, um, where they found the statutes as to how long we needed to retain those documents. And so that is actually included in the retention schedule, the site, that that citation. What we're looking at today is a, is a policy. And then with that policy is the attachment of the the schedule, just because it is so extensive, because it it covers so many different departments and different needs. And so this is just the general, who's going to be over, the oversight of it, what it includes, you know, what what defines our records. Um, and then ultimately, um, as we go through this, this policy, it'll need to be determined who is responsible for basically keeping track of where we're at on all these records. responsible for basically keeping track of where we're at on all these records, what needs to be retained, what needs to be destroyed, working with IT department, MIS, and other departments, you know, individually in regards to keeping track and having a record of what's retained and what's destroyed moving forward. That's the only thing that wasn't specifically defined in this policy because we needed direction from this committee.
Do you have anything you want to say, Cody?
Yeah.
Okay. Cody, you're welcome. Any other questions to page four?
No, at the moment, no.
Okay. Chris, you can proceed to page five, please. You lose them.
All right, so this section deals with roles and responsibilities around record-keeping. There were a few edits here that essentially state whom would be responsible in terms of Policy and Governance Committee, what is listed as the Oklahoma County Information Technology Council, and then option, Policy and Governance Committee as serving as the committee here. Also, the second paragraph here starts to align that the Policy and Governance Committee has general program management responsibility, including working with the Board of County Commissioners and each Oklahoma County elected official offices to ensure program resources. And then it states or lists a number of items that the Policy and Governance Committee is responsible for. So just listed here in this section here, so.
I'll pause you right there. I wanted to invite Dane. Dane's been very instrumental in meeting weekly regarding this policy and the retention schedule. And so Dane, do you want to speak a little bit to what the Oklahoma County Information Technology Council is?
Okay. Or it needs to be. O C I T C. That's something that I believe was, if not formally adopted, was at least drafted in, I want to say 2014, under my previous predecessor. The idea being that it takes representatives of all of the offices, all of the elected offices and so forth, puts them into kind of a steering committee, if you will, for information technology needs. I don't know that it ever convened. I do, I remember seeing a draft for it, for a B O C C draft, but I don't know if it was ever convened to actually meet. So at some point, this is something that auditors tell us quite frequently that we probably should have, and probably needs to happen. And it helps move the county forward in an IT format that's kind of unified.
How many people were originally on this?
I would think it would have been a representative from each office. I remember seeing, from reading the draft, I remember seeing that the director of the MIS department, which would be me at this time, would be a nonvoting member. So kind of like Cody chairs the BET as a nonvoting member, something similar to that, I think.
So representative from each elected official office plus the three commissioners?
Correct.
Okay.
We used to have, in the past, when I started here in 2010, we had an IT, an IT committee, and that was made up of kind of the same thing. It was designed very similarly. And then under that, we had an IT subcommittee. I don't know that we needed to go that far, but it was made up of even deeper representatives of each department and/or office. So it was an even broader set of people. I'm not suggesting we renew that or redo it, I'm just telling you what existed in 2010.
I don't want to get in a rabbit hole here.
Right, exactly.
Sidetracked, but.
Sure.
Was this committee officially formed by resolution at that time?
I don't, you know, the 2014 one, I don't know that it ever went across the B O C C. I've seen the draft of it, but I don't know that I've ever, I don't know that we were able to find a record that the B O C C formally adopted it or appointed it or formed it, I guess is probably the correct language.
Okay.
So as you can see, it's listed as an option. If that's something that we wanted to discuss further, implement, or the Policy and Governance Team would be, and the board of each Board of County Commissioners office would be responsible for the oversight and responsibility, all listed in the policy under number 3.1. I just thought it was interesting, and so I wanted to bring it up for discussion. And then number 3.2 is executive leadership. The Board of County Commissioners and Oklahoma County elected officials are responsible for showing strong sponsorship of the policy and related records management policies, procedures, and standards within their respected offices. And then we strike 3.3, which was the legal, tax, and risk offices for holds. And then under 3.3 is the Management Information Systems, M I S.
Which part?
Yes, and this section around the M I S, you know, defines what the M I S group is responsible for, including the items that are listed, that are listed here. We struck the one at the top and then left the ones that are listed here. So there's a number of items here as well.
Any questions thus far? Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah. You can go ahead and move to 3.5, which is Oklahoma County Offices and Departments.
Yep, here you go. So this defines, you know, the record-keeping requirements for Oklahoma County Offices and Departments, essentially states Oklahoma County Offices and Departments will establish and maintain record-keeping systems that comply with legal, regulatory, and corporate requirements. Leadership of the departments are accountable for ensuring that records management policies and procedures are implemented at all levels. Item 3.6 around records coordinators was stricken as a part of this. Essentially, as those, really the planks behind that were really designated under, what's listed in what was 3.5. Excuse me, under 3.3. Under 3.4, county employees. This defines the responsibility for county employees. Oklahoma County employees are responsible for the appropriate management and storage of their business records and for preparation of their materials for off-site storage. Specific responsibilities include the following, just again, listed here. Which are really some of the sort of basic day-to-day types of activities you would find with record-keeping. All right. Item four defines ownership and administration of county records. Essentially, Oklahoma County owns all records created, received, and/or used in the course of conducting business. All records pertaining to Oklahoma County business, no matter where they are located, are considered Oklahoma County property. These records should not be used for personal or private purposes. Oklahoma County reserves the right to access and review the content of any records or information created, stored, transmitted, or received using county computers or other resources that are located in county facilities or on county property. To the full extent allowed by law, employees should not expect any right to privacy with respect to such records. All records located in any Oklahoma County facility or in any facility managed by a third party on behalf of Oklahoma County are county property and must be preserved in accordance with Oklahoma County records management policies and procedures. Employees who are terminated must also return all records. Third parties working on behalf of Oklahoma County must return originals and all copies of Oklahoma County records upon the termination of their contract with the county. And furthermore, intellectual property rights in all records belonging to Oklahoma County are owned by Oklahoma County in perpetuity. Intellectual property rights extend to all renewals, extensions, revivals, consents, and applications. All right.
Okay, move on to page nine. Any other questions on page eight? Okay.
All right. So the next section deals with records lifecycle management, which includes the 5.1, which is the creation and capture of records. Records are created to provide evidence of business transactions. All employees, contractors, and agents of Oklahoma County are responsible for creating and documenting business events and transactions in a professional and concise manner, utilizing the appropriate language, facts, and integrity. Rules for creating and capturing records and metadata or information about the records should be incorporated into the procedures governing all business processes for which there is a requirement for evidence of the activity, so. Same kind of thing here, 5.2, maintenance and use. So first, 5.2.1, the retention schedule, or really a definition around the retention schedule. Oklahoma, the Oklahoma County Records Retention Schedule is the only retention policy authorized for use. The Records Retention Schedule identifies what records are being managed and defines how long they need to be retained based upon their business legal compliance, operational, and/or continuing use to the county. All amendments or variations must be approved by the Policy and Governance Committee. Also included under this is the suspension of the retention schedule at times where the disposal of records may be suspended under special circumstances, including litigation, regulatory inspections, government investigation, audits, or other actions that require the retention of records otherwise eligible for disposal. So essentially, this really defines when the, any types of record holds, legal holds, audit holds, et cetera, can be applied to records so that records are not disposed of, you know, per the policy. So this would include all records, including email records, instant message records, other electronic records, paper records, which are all potentially discoverable in litigation or regulatory investigations, again, regardless of medium and physical location. Oklahoma County's legal, risk, and tax departments are the only offices with the authority to issue or release a legal hold order that suspends the retention and disposal requirements of records. Oklahoma County's legal, risk, and tax departments will maintain a record of all their respective hold orders, both active and superseded. The same groups will issue the legal hold to custodians and backend users of the records to identify potentially relevant records and notifying the different groups of their duty to preserve the information so that it is not disposed of. Per this guideline, custodians acknowledge receipt of the hold order and return the acknowledgement to the issuing department within seven days. The legal, tax, and risk departments will periodically review hold orders and will notify custodians that the duty to preserve continues or that those holds can be lifted and also to notify the custodians when the matter is closed and the duty to preserve the records is no longer required. All right. So I'll just stop there. Any questions, thoughts about those two sections?
You can proceed.
Oh, great. In terms of storage of the records, records will be stored to ensure their protection, usability, and integrity for as long as they are needed by the county as defined by the Records Retention Schedule or active legal holds. You know, this would include appropriate systems, environments, handling procedures, ability to store the various media, you know, physical and intellectual safeguarding of records, you know, in achieving compliant record-keeping as a part of the implementation of the records, of the records program. So that would include, you know, any special records that need to be stored in climate-controlled types of environments, things like that, again, to protect and preserve those as records. Putting records on their home computers. The ways it must be returned to Oklahoma County premises or other Oklahoma County-approved storage locations approved by the elected official or department head, so, all right. Any questions here?
We've got a comment from Cody with the sheriff's department. He's their general counsel.
You had mentioned a minute ago, kind of back to Jim's point a second ago, I heard you to say that the records, the policy, if an elected official's office were to choose to hold a document or a set of documents longer than the legally required time, that would have to be approved by this committee. I understand that if we have to have it in the document, that this committee would be the one changing the document, but I think some type of language that indicates that anything greater than the minimum requirement would be an automatic approval. That way, elected officials understand that if they choose to hold a document for business-related purposes beyond the statutory requirement, that they can do so and make that decision. It just appeared in here that those decisions would be subject to approval from another group. I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Cody. And that was in number four, so if it's the will of the committee, we can have them make that change? Okay. Chris, do you have that documented? Christopher?
Yeah, let's see. All right, let's. All right, so that would be a change that we'll need to make, just to confirm that?
Yes, and this video is recorded, and so I can send you the recording so that way you can make sure that we've got that documented in the right spot. But it is under number four, under ownership and administration of county records, that we would essentially allow for any elected official or department to hold their records longer than the minimum.
Than the retention minimum, yeah, the minimum retention, okay.
That it's at their will or desire to hold those, that it does not have to be approved by the Policy and Governance Committee.
I'm just catching a few notes on that.
And I think if the minimum requirements are in the document, and then we weren't going to change the document because of an elected official wanting to hold them longer, as you have a change in elected officials, they may have a different determination on how long they want to hold that. We don't need to come back and redo this document every single time, I would think. So I would think that this document would lay out the minimum requirements and then allow the elected officials to hold them longer if they determine. And then if, you know, two years down the road, they be like, well, you know, we're having to hold on to too much paper, they can adjust back down to the minimum, you know, at their decision. So as long as it doesn't lock in elected officials beyond the minimum statutory requirement, I think that would be the most flexible form of a document. I think that would be the most flexible form of a document for the county moving forward.
Agreed, Cody. So if you could just have that language, similar language put in there, that would be wonderful.
And I also want to invite, I mean, this has been a collaborative effort for everyone that's in this room. So David or Keith, if anyone else has any other suggestions or comments as we go through, definitely invite you to come up and let us know now so that way we can finalize these records.
I've captured some notes on that and we can modify that if that's so the case. So we'll do that. All right. Let's move on to section 5.2.2, security confidentiality and privacy. All employees and third parties must adhere to county policy to maintain the security and confidentiality of Oklahoma County records. All records are to be stored in safe and secure locations and protected from environmental or other potential harm. Records created, received, or maintained by Oklahoma County are generally deemed confidential and should be circulated within the county only when there is a sound business reason to do so. Access to and sharing of records and information is limited to Oklahoma County employees and authorized independent contractors or temporary employees under contract to Oklahoma County who have a business need for access. Access to and sharing of records and information between Oklahoma County employees and other employees of Oklahoma County is permissible when there is a sound business reason to do so. Theft or misappropriation of records or giving access to another person who was not authorized to have access to records is strictly prohibited. Oklahoma County's policy is to maintain and strict confidence all personal and private customer and employee information, employee records and customer records. And information should not be disclosed or utilized other than for legitimate business purposes unless the employee or a customer specifically authorizes the disclosure or is required by a legal subpoena, court order, or other legal requirement. All right. So I'll stop here. Any questions or comments here?
Anybody else have that same thought? I've been writing policies for the sheriff's office for a long time and I try not to allow things into them that we don't need. And I think this section kind of creates the feel or gives the impression that we want to hold everything and not be transparent. That's the most, you know, I would say the transparency gets used from that horseshoe 20 times a day. And this section kind of contradicts that, so.
So should we just add a disclaimer within this or just omit this entire section?
Well, I think the Open Records Act covers the whole thing. I don't know that we need it. If we have a statute that covered something, I don't think we need a policy that covers it.
So just omit it altogether?
Yeah, I don't see a reason why to have it.
So Christopher, on the 5.2.2, security confidentiality, excuse me, and privacy, we would omit that section?
Okay. Got it, all right. Duly noted, okay. Let's see, 5.2.3, the section, detailed business continuity and vital records. Typically, just as a, just as a quick side aside, is vital records are generally an organization's most vital and/or important records. They generally make up anywhere from around 3% to about 5% of records within an organization. So these would be those records that an organization, you know, God forbid, something were to happen to the organization, if those records would enable an organization to basically restart themselves or reestablish themselves. So things like articles of incorporation, board meeting minutes, you know, things like that. So again, generally speaking, a very small portion of records, but a very important section of records, to say the least. So for this, for this policy, business continuity planning and contingency measures must ensure that records that are vital to the continued functioning of the county as identified as part of a records risk analysis subsequently protected and recoverable when needed. The Oklahoma County offices and departments will identify records needed for business continuity purposes and NIT will ensure their accessibility. All right. Any questions, thoughts here?
No.
Great. All right. So moving down to records disposal. So this defines sort of the requirements around disposing of records, specifically official records. Official records that have met the Oklahoma County Records Retention Schedule requirements and are not subject to any legal holds are eligible for disposal per the disposal procedures issued by the Records Management Program. Under no circumstance should duplicates or draft documents be retained longer than the official records. When records are approved for disposal, all copies in the possession of employees must also be destroyed. This includes copies in all media and formats such as photocopies, microfilm copies, and electronic files stored on removable media, hard disks, file servers, magnetic tape, or other storage devices, subject to the limitations of specific software applications. Premature disposal of official records is expressly prohibited. The intentional premature disposal of records will be taken very seriously and will result in disciplinary action up to including termination of employment and possible civil and criminal liability. Disposal of confidential official records should be carried out in accordance with the appropriate confidential disposal procedures. All right.
What are the appropriate means? That question that probably ought to be listed in this policy as well.
It's listed in the retention schedule. Because many of the documents, such as court services, we weren't able to utilize an outside service to destroy those if we ever needed to. And so I think it's outlined in the schedule as to how. Correct, Christopher? I think we had discussed that.
Yeah, let me take a quick look. Let's see if it's there.
Because that was brought up whenever we were looking at moving the file cabinets as to how they can be destroyed, if they have to be stored on-site or if they're allowed to be moved, if they're court documents or legal documents offsite. So that should be included in that retention schedule since it's specific to the type of document. Does that answer your question?
Let me take a-
Well, that in terms of location, I'm talking about the actual destruction of them also. Or they have to be shredded? What are the means of disposal?
Yeah, I know the things that we deal with have what's called CGIS information included in a lot of documents. It's criminal justice information stuff. It's not the acronym, but it's basically, it's personal information on reports and victims' names and things of that nature. So when we have stuff that has to be destroyed, we either have to do it ourselves with a crosshatching shredder or we have to have a representative of our office there to ensure that those boxes are put into that big shredder by this company and he has to observe it and they execute a little report and all that. So it's, that's how we do it, with CGIS information that's controlled by like the FBI.
That's perfect, but that's precisely what I'm talking about.
Having something like that in this policy.
Yeah, we, I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna say we might add a carve-out. We could add a carve-out for that. Let me capture that around. Let me, let's see.
And under the records disposal section that we just went over, the middle paragraph, "Under no circumstances should duplicates or draft documents be retained longer than the official records." I think that goes back to what we spoke about earlier about the elected officials having the opportunity or the availability of keeping something longer than what the statutory minimum is. So might want to reword that or omit it or something.
Agreed. Yeah. Okay. Well, let's go back up top.
It would be good, Christopher, when we get to the retention schedule, and we're talking about the policy, but maybe to have documented within those departments how they have to destroy those records.
Yes, generally, let me make sure, Jessica, I understand what you said. So your thought was to also have the specifics around how records should be disposed of in the schedule as well?
Correct, yeah. Along with how many years they are to be retained at minimum.
Let's see.
And that's the next agenda item, but just to notate since we're in that section.
Okay. Okay, got it, all right. I've captured that here, okay.
My suggestion would be on how the medium is disposed of, you could reach out to each department and find out. So like the undersheriff just mentioned, the crosshatching of, you know, certain documents. Reach out to each department and find out how they are disposing of documents, if they are disposing of them. But secondarily, Iron Mountain doing a statutory research as well as business practice research to make sure that we are doing it the right way, what we're currently doing. And then B, we haven't had a retention policy, so there's going to be lots of situations where we haven't been disposing of property. So we need to know from our consultant what would be the appropriate way to dispose. So I think verifying how it's happening and then making sure that how it's happening is correct. And if it's not, what is the correct mechanism? That way, we can adjust fire and make sure that we're complying with statute number one and best practices number two.
Thank you, Cody.
Yes, we can absolutely do that. We can provide some best practices around disposal of records, both in physical and electronic. Because depending on the types of records, especially like media and things like that, that might be a little bit different. But I've added some language here that we could capture, you know, best practices around the disposal of records. We could add something like that.
Well, and it'll be potentially different, not just the particular medium itself, whether it's digital or physical, but also what is part of that information, the sensitive nature of that information. So I think there will be different levels of disposal depending upon the actual physical or digital attributes of the information as well as the information contained in the medium itself.
All right, I've captured, I've captured that. So we'll add some language into, to look at, sort of defining, you know, a process around the disposal of the records. We could do that. All right. Any other comments around records disposal?
No.
All right, let's move on to, I'm sorry?
You can proceed.
Great. The next section is around historical records preservation. Defined as records of continuing historical value to Oklahoma County must be retained in accordance with archival principles and best practices to ensure their availability and integrity over time. The Policy and Governance Committee is responsible for identifying and managing Oklahoma County's historical records. Any thoughts or comments here?
Yeah, Jessica, just a quick question about the historical records aspect of it. Did we talk, was there a discussion about a change from the Policy and Governance Committee actually responsible for identifying and managing those records?
So on the historical records preservation, I also think Paul brought up a good comment whenever we looked at this together, that we need to document that it's the Oklahoma County clerk that holds our historical documents somehow within the 5.2.7. And then also, we had talked about, we didn't know if the Oklahoma County Historical Society played any part and what that looked like. But I do think it needs to cite that the Oklahoma County clerk is responsible for record-keeping. Those are the two thoughts that I know that we had discussed. So I'll lead to your recommendation of how that is to be.
So would the clerk's office identify and manage or just manage what P and G identifies?
I would think manage.
Manage, not identify, okay.
Will you say that to the mic for Christopher in regards to your thoughts?
Second.
In regards to what changes that you want to make?
So essentially, the Policy and Governance Committee is responsible for identifying the Oklahoma County's historical records and then the Oklahoma County Clerk's Office is responsible for managing.
I would agree. I would agree with you.
Okay, I see he's making notes. Thank you for collaboration on that one. Wasn't sure how to prepare that.
Okay, so I've captured that as the P and G Committee would be responsible for identifying historical records. The county clerk would be responsible for the management of historical records. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, okay. Okay. Got it, okay. All right, I've got that. All right, if no further comments there, moving to section six around electronic record-keeping. Electronic records, including email and other electronic business communications that meet the definition of official records, must be captured, managed, retained, and disposed of or preserved according to the provisions of the Records Management Program, including Oklahoma County Records Retention Schedule. Other official records must be maintained in a county-approved record-keeping system capable of classifying records according to the county's Records Retention Schedule, making them accessible for business and legal purposes and preserving them for their entire retention period. Electronic records that do not meet the definition of official records should only be retained as long as actively needed and in no case longer than the official record. Backup media, including tapes and other magnetic media, will be created and maintained for disaster recovery/business continuity purposes only. Backup media will not be used to satisfy records retention requirements and should be recycled or disposed of as soon as the content is superseded or has become obsolete. All right, any questions?
Yeah, I do have, I do have a comment. Dane, it makes me think about you as far as the official electronic records must be maintained in a county-approved record-keeping system capable of classifying. Do we have that system in place that can, that has that capability?
Depends on what you call classifying.
Right.
Right, depends on how you define classifying. And it depends on which record you're talking about because we don't manage all the records.
Right.
Right, there are multiple offices or multiple IT departments that manage, that have their own.
Right, exactly.
Right, our job is to provide the ability to get to them, but not necessarily what they are beyond that.
Classic, right.
Correct. So that was tough.
Which leads to another question. I know we would all like to save as much physical space as we possibly could with all our records retention. However, there are different requirements. Specifically, come to mind the court clerk.
Yes.
Right, and all their records. So according to statute, Chris, or whoever else is listening, can all records or some records be scanned and digitized to save them and retain them? Or do some original copies have to be on file? Especially when it comes to court proceedings?
Especially when it comes to court proceedings.
I would think.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah, I can jump in. Um, so we've dealt with this with other government entities and, and entities in private sector. So I think at a high level, yes, generally speaking, uh, records can be converted from paper to digital form. Um, in some cases, we're seeing some records that are born digitally and they never really see the light of day as paper. Um, so there's, it's a, a sort of a born digital record. Um, they can be utilized as the official record. Um, we would need to do a little bit of research because each jurisdiction can vary. Um, and industry can vary, but there generally is a small subset of records, um, that might, uh, you know, require to be in paper form. So things that have maybe a, uh, like a, um, a, a wet signature, you know, things like that. So that can be researched and find out what be, would be applicable, uh, to, uh, to your jurisdiction, uh, to kind of lay that out. Um, but generally speaking, digital records, uh, can be and are, and are often, um, the official record uh, for organizations. Again, to the points that were raised around reducing physical footprint and space and, and things like that. I'm working currently with a, a large county, um, in the Midwest, um, who, um, they in fact are doing quite a bit of that. We're working with them on a, it's also, it's a records initiative, but also a space initiative because they're looking to, to reduce space for physical records and things like that. So, um, you know, they are incorporating more and more digital records across all of their departments, um, to be able to do that. So, d- does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I appreciate if you'd look into what specific requirements there are in Oklahoma, not necessarily just the Midwest as a whole.
Yep, understood.
Yeah, I thought that was, hey, going back to whenever I was sitting up here with you guys, I thought that was part of what we were looking at was getting guidance on those pieces as well. So I, I was anticipating seeing that in the records retention schedule related to not only what we have to retain for how long, but in what format must we, must we retain those documents?
Correct.
And that's going to be a different jurisdiction to jurisdictions state to state. So I think an analysis needs to be done on each particular type of, uh, document. And when I say document, I'm, I'm talking about any piece of information, whether it be digital or physical, um, to determine whether it can be, uh, if it's in physical form now, can it be converted to digital and be sufficient to retain the document that way? Or if it has to stay in physical form, I think each individual type of document that has been identified or record, I should say, and so the document, uh, we need to know how long we have to keep it minimally and how we have to keep it. Do we have to keep it physical? Or can we convert a, a prior physical record into a digital record?
Correct, I agree with you. I'd like to see that delineated in this policy as well.
Yeah, so, so generally speaking, uh, rules of best evidence, uh, generally defines that electronic records essentially have the same value as a physical or paper-based records.
Chris, I, I, I get that, I get that. And we get that here, but Oklahoma statute, we've been told, uh, differently on, on several things. So if you could just take a look at that, we would appreciate it.
Sure, let me capture that. Um, I'll capture that. Um, and also generally speaking, um, as we mentioned, going back to the policy and application of policy, um, the, uh, again, what sort of defines, not only what defines a record is format, excuse me, is content and not format. Generally speaking, the retention rules, how long they're kept, would also be the same. Because you're really just talking about a different media or format of that record, but the content is the same. So if I have a paper contract, you know, that I scan, I make it a digital contract, you know, the retention for both would be the same. Generally, what most organizations are doing are disposing of the paper and they're keeping the electronic, again barring no specific issues around things like, uh, hey, you have to keep a wet signature or some other stuff. But we can do a little research and see what we can find, you know, specific to, to Oklahoma and, and, you know, what the, the rules would be there.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Alright, so I've captured that as well.
One, one more thing on section six, the electronic record-keeping section. Um, the middle or the second paragraph that says the official electronic records must be maintained in a county-approved record-keeping system capable of classifying, blah, blah, blah. I don't think we need the capable of classifying. I think as soon as it's approved by Oklahoma County, we're good. There's no point in leaving something in a document that takes us to an additional step.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was snagging on earlier also, so. Absolutely. I, I would be in support of omitting that.
Alright, so is the, so is the request here to remove, uh, the phrase, um, capable of classifying records?
Yes.
Okay, um, that may, so, so we can absolutely do that. Um, one of the things or the reason that we, uh, include or generally see something that like that in a policy is any record-keeping system should have the ability, at least i- in, in some way, shape or form, to be able to determine, uh, let me back up. So sometimes classifying can be sort of a, a misnomer sort of term. Sometimes thinking more around categorizing records. Basically being able to have a system that at some point has the ability to say, okay, these records are truly accounting records. Um, these records are HR records, et cetera, to be able to, um, uh, for that system to be able to know and understand what those records are. Um, what that technology enables you to do is to sort of more stre- in a more streamlined and efficient way, apply the retention policy, um, and for the system to be able to store those records as such, again, according to the schedule. So, uh, we can absolutely remove it. Might be something for some additional discussion. Again, just from an industry perspective, again, we can absolutely remove it, but just something else to consider.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yep, understood. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add an, yeah, I'm gonna add a note here, uh. Really, uh, okay. Okay, got it. Alright, I've added a note for that.
Okay.
Okay, and then.
Um, any other?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
I don't think there's any other, um, comments on electric, electronic rec- record-keeping. Is there any? No?
Chris, I think the issue is, we're trying to find out what the minimum requirement is so that we can stay within statute. It's not to try to, what we don't want to do is overburden ourselves with extra regulatory requirements that aren't necessary per statute, that we cannot meet. Now, if there are some things that we can't do right now and you have some suggestions for us to work towards in the future, we could always look at that, but memorializing that in a document that we are going to put in place for everybody to adhere to, that is beyond the minimum requirements. At this point, we can't jump from, from zero to a hundred miles an hour all at once. Let's make sure that we are meeting the requirement and not checking the depth of the water with two feet.
Sure, that's, that's absolutely, um, uh, something that could, uh, be considered. Um, and totally agree with you. I mean, it has to be something that you can do. It could be aspirational, at least you get to a point, depending on how much you invest in electronic record-keeping systems and the direction that you go. So, um, yes, this can, sounds like this, I guess a recommendation to strike this. Um, and that's fine, I'm not, you know, we can capture that as a, um, as an, as an item here. That's what, what is being proposed.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, perfect, I'll go ahead and capture that. Got it, okay. Alright, duly noted, okay. Um, any other items in this section?
Not seeing any. Um, on number seven for training, uh, Dane's up here to talk through what schedules and, um, policies that we already have and, and why Dane and I struck, striked through most of them. And then also need really direction from Policy and Governance in regards to what they want this to look like moving forward and who is responsible for disseminating the information to the elected officials and departments. And so we didn't know if that is the MIS department, if it's the county manager. And then in regards to training, um, what that would look like, um, do you have a, got a profile? Then that, that accomplishes that.
So, that essentially goes back to this IT committee that, that we need to establish.
Yeah, under roles and responsibilities that Oklahoma County Information Technology Council is why we kept that in there because we didn't, when we got to this pe- piece, it was unsure as to what are those next steps.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I, I agree with that committee. Um, and is there, um, room, I know when that was probably originally drafted, not necessarily approved, it didn't account for a county manager position. Um, but I think that that would be something that would be useful, um, as far as, you know, a, a member on that committee as well.
Right, I don't think, I don't think our department should be responsible for the, you know, issuing the county clerk's records retention policy to someone from there. Because if someone new comes along, I'm not even going to know that because they handle those accounts. So that'd be a, that'd be a tough burden on us to keep track of offices that were, that we don't manage or do any of their IT for, to try to keep them up to date on it.
Yeah, good point.
So I guess from the Policy and Governance Committee, we would just need to hear if, if we are going to take steps moving forward in creation of that committee. And then creating a resolution that can go along with this process and this policy once it is formally reviewed and approved by the committee and our DA before it goes across the OCC.
I think that's a good way to move forward. If we're going to create the council, we're just going to have to, uh, create a resolution to pass by OCC first.
Yeah, and we can do it all at the same time.
I agree.
And we're in agreement that, that the membership of the council should be somebody from every elected official's office and yourself.
I might would even suggest someone from the DA's office and the public defender's office as well, since they're a part of IT as a whole. It's just we're responsible for the DA's office from an IT point of view and to some degree the public defender's office as well. They should probably have some representation on it.
Agreed.
Okay.
Maybe, probably less so, but. Alright.
Okay, so Christopher, in regards to training on number seven, um, what that would look like is that, um, from discussions today that we are going to move forward in creating a resolution and communication amongst the elected officials regarding creating a, looking for the title, um, sorry, next page. The Oklahoma County Information Technology Council. Um, and each, that would include the county manager and a representative from each, um, elected official's office, um, including the, uh, a member from each board of county, or commissioner's office, um, in order to review, train, and also possibly recommend other policies that you've listed here that would be, um, in conjunction with training for records retention.
Okay. Okay, alright, I cap.
Dane and I will work on that resolution since he's familiar with it and can look up some historical data of what that possibly looked like back in 2014, I believe he referenced. And then we can work with each one of the commissioner's office to review and discuss that, um, resolution. And then whenever we finalize the policy, we can reference that resolution and, and the policy.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Alright. Uh, let's see, moving to item eight, which is, uh, program audits. Uh, the Records Management Program will be audited periodically for compliance with the policies and procedures in effect at the time of the audit. The Policy and Governance Committee members are authorized to conduct these audits and report on program compliance to the appropriate, uh, county officials. Failure to comply with approved Oklahoma County Records Management Policies and Procedures can lead to disciplinary actions against individuals.
Yeah, so, so I have some concerns about that. Um, speaking just from the standpoint of the sheriff's offices, this is the body that's going to audit destruction of seizures related records. You guys can't see those. So you're being, you're being required to audit something that you can't be in possession of. And who's going, and, and this body has no mechanism to level any kind of disciplinary action on somebody else's, on somebody else's employee. You, you guys don't get to levy that stuff. So I think we need to re, totally rework this and it should be, each individual office is responsible for identifying a person to ensure compliance with the county policy and have, just have it be that simple because, how else, how else are you going to?
Would that person then be represented on this IT council? I mean, since each elected official has a representative on this council? I mean, would that satisfy?
I think you're asking too different things. Because, because the person we're going to put on that is, is going to be a tech-related person. And, and, and a tech, and tech-related people in our office aren't necessarily the ones that are going to be, um, establishing controls and, and, and discipline within our, within our office.
Okay.
I think putting some type of auditing, just the way we're structured, is going to be extremely difficult with the different elected official offices. And thinking back to when I was sitting in your chairs, I know I didn't have time to come through and do audits of other departments. Um, you know, not, not just having the time to go do the audit. And you also have to understand deeply what each office's documents are to be able to have an understanding of where they fall and all that. I, I just, I think it's one of those deals, we have a, a base requirement. It's based on the minimum requirements in statute. It tells us what, what, um, what types of information we have to keep and for how long and just keep it as minimal as possible. And then we just have to trust that our elected officials, that we're all doing things the right way.
So essentially, we can omit this section.
I'm in agreement.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, I've gone ahead and done that. I've just made notes to omit the section. Um, any other comments or anything here before we move on? Alright. And then the, uh, the last item, item nine, uh, records, records, policies, procedures and practices essentially reads, "The Policy and Governance Committee will issue supplementary records management procedures and guidelines as necessary to ensure the creation and management of county records in compliance with this policy and applicable laws, regulations and best practices." Any thoughts here? Any potential changes or anything to do with this section?
I think we're good on that.
Okay, alright. I believe that is the last, you know, that's the last item in the policy. Um, we've noted a number of items within the document. I've also taken some other notes. And, uh, we'll work with the team around, uh, discussing and working through making these, uh, specified revisions.
So between now and the next Policy and Governance meeting, um, will there be a revised draft sent to the offices for review so we can actually get a policy approved?
Yes, so, um, what I would recommend is that we will, uh, Yes, so um, what I would recommend is that we will, uh, they'll work to adopt all of the changes and red lines that we created today. And then I will put this before um, our district attorney team in order to review. Lisa, hi Caitlin. It's good to see you up here. Lisa was um, always very involved in our conversations in regards to how important a retention policy is for the county. And so she is aware that I'm going to be sending this over to her in order to give a good look uh, before we bring it back to policy and governance next month for final review and approval.
Okay. Thank you, Chris, for the policy. Uh, we'll move on to the.
You need to take a formal vote for all the changes. I don't know if that's necessary to approve the changes made today.
I'll make a motion to um, approve the uh, changes made on the proposed uh, Oklahoma County Records Retention Policy.
And second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number four, now Iron Mountain, but we'll talk about the retention schedule this time.
Alright, let me pull up the schedule. Alright, uh, this may be a little bit of an eye chart for some. I do, I am sharing it. Um, and I can sort of go through the construct of the schedule and talk through it. Again, I'll try to make it a little larger if I can. But, um, so essentially what this retention schedule is, is a listing by the different functions um, across Oklahoma County. Um, it lists for each of the functions, the categories of records, a description of those types of records. It includes record type examples. And then, most importantly, the, um, the required retention period. And also what is called a retention trigger. So, I'm gonna, let's go through an example here. I can kind of show, um, okay, so this is.
And Christopher, while I'm catching it, um, at the top, you'll need to delete that records retention schedule, um, District Two Yard. That's just, she carried, Michelle carried that over. Probably it copied it and that just needs to be deleted because what you're looking at is Oklahoma County Retention Schedule, like overview. The table of contents. So that just needs to be deleted. Sorry, just saw that I'd mentioned it.
Yep. No, no worries. We'll delete that. Absolutely delete that. Um, so the way that we've created the schedule is with multiple tabs. So, the first tab lists all of the different uh, business functions or areas across the county. And then there are additional tabs for each of the different groups. So, for example, benefits, court services, District Two Yard, emergency management, uh, engineering facilities, um, et cetera. So again, as a way to be able to, for those groups to be able to go specifically to their tab as an easy way to be able to go and, um, and review the retention schedule and the types of records specific to them versus ha, versus having to go through the full-blown schedule. Um, so I've selected the benefits tab and I can sort of take you through, uh, again, the construct of the retention schedule. So, the first thing you have here is what's called a code or a record code. So, a code is a specific, um.
Are you still there? You can proceed. Are you still there? Can we leave you?
Maybe the switch is on your chair, Paul.
You gotta. Christopher. You can't leave. Oh, he's asking to join. What? Oh.
One suggestion that I would have, I don't see a public document, is to have them notate if there, where it says how long the retention schedule is for that particular document, is that statute. And if the statute, or if you list the Oklahoma statute, definitely that department can reference that statute.
Didn't you say that that was indicated? Yeah.
Yeah, they're, um, they have a portal. Um, and so they wanted to give everyone access to this portal in order to, to access the retention schedule. So what I asked them to do was put it into an Excel document that had the citation um, to where they could reference or click the, the link. And so that should have been included in, in this record retention schedule that we, that was sent out to everybody. Um, or will be sent out to everyone are those citations, rather than everyone having to have a username and a portal and it's something that we have to pay for moving forward. Um, once our um, contract is up in, in December of twenty twenty six, since this is paid for our fed. And so that is something that should be already included in this. But, thank you. Um, it, I don't, they may have not sent you the one with the citations. Michelle may have sent out the one just specific to each location or each, sorry, excuse me, department. But I've seen the one where they're, or sorry, cited. So whenever, with citations, so whenever that is sent out through the committee or by me or Dane to everybody, the final one, um, it'll, we'll be sure to make sure it's in there. I think that's a great recommendation. Thank you. I just didn't want us to have to pay for a service after December twenty twenty six, um, in order just to see the citations.
Easier to just see it referenced in the doc, working document.
Christopher, are you back?
I'm back. I'm back, thanks.
Yeah, good point.
So while you're out, Chris, or when you dropped, um, it was brought up regarding uh, the citation of Oklahoma statutes to where you found how long we needed to retain that record. And I know that in our calls weekly, that we had talked about those citations being in a portal. And since um, it's easier for everyone to have access to an Excel document or document for them to review and then also not having to keep up with that portal access after December of twenty twenty six. Just to make sure that the final record that is sent out to everyone has links to where you have those, that cited, to where that was found.
We can provide that in the final. So the final version of the schedule, what we would do is provide the uh, the, a final updated version of the schedule. Meaning if there were any changes to the uh, the record-keeping uh, laws and statutes, we would update the schedule accordingly. Of course, with Oklahoma County approval, because as a part of the, of the monitoring process, we'll be working directly uh, with you all to make you aware of any changes. And we'll need your express approval to change the retention schedule should something change. Um, so in that final schedule, we can also provide a listing of the, of the citations that were utilized uh, to determine those retention requirements or rules. So we, we can absolutely provide both.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Alright, uh, so before I dropped, um, I was going through uh, the construct of the retention schedule. Uh, again, as I mentioned, there are multiple tabs. We broke this out, so each of the different groups can click on their specific tab and see only their records for ease of use. So, uh, what I have highlighted here, just as an example, uh, is uh, benefits or, and those records relating to benefits. So this particular item that I've selected is uh, benefit plan administration. So again, each, each category of records has a unique code, which basically that code identifies uh, those records under, again, under this unique code. Should you all elect to go to any kind of systems that have the ability to manage information using an um, a unique ID or coding system, this retention schedule can be utilized um, to do that. So for this particular category, these are benefit plan administration records. That's the name of the category. Also included is a, as a general description of these records. So in this case, for benefit plan administration, uh, the just, the specific description is records related to the general management and administration of benefits plans such as 401K, retirement plans, uh, pension plans, stock purchase plans, disability, leave of absence. Again, all of these things that would be pertaining um, to, to benefit programs. Under column D or the next column are specific listings of the different types of records that are utilized within that area. Um, so in this case, uh, annual summary of stock option grants, annual evaluation reports, uh, benefit plan administration records, et cetera. Again, there's a whole host of items here. And then, most importantly, moving over, the things that uh, most importantly is the minimum uh, retention period and also what's called a trigger or period. And the trigger is essentially the date that is used for when the retention, uh, the retention um, plant, the retention rules and requirements begin. So you might see something like active for what's called, for active records or those records that are currently in use for active employees. Those records, um, uh, those records are held until generally speaking, after someone would terminate from the organization. Uh, something like that. So that's where that retention clock would start to tick. And other examples, I'll grab one, uh, let me grab another example, um, of one. There are also records examples. Um, okay, so here's court services. This is contracts and agreements and general contracts and agreements. Um, in this case, the uh, the trigger or the, what starts the retention clock is the date that the contract or agreement is terminated. So once that contract is terminated, again, it's then kept for a period of, uh, of, of ten years. There are also other categories of records when um, uh, uh, that is, that is based on, where the trigger is based on the date the record is created. So, um, let me find a quick example of that. Uh, let's see, let's see if I can find an example. And the reason I'm going through these, because the, the trigger and the, uh, the rules um, can be very different. And how that retention period starts can be different based on the different types of, of records. Okay, here's one here. So I'm looking under uh, emergency management. Um, so in this case, administrative records, I'm going to go over here. Yep, the specific trigger is, that starts the retention um, clock for administrative records under emergency management is the date that the record is created. And they are to be held for three years. So, I wanted to mention that because again, that can be a little bit different and the way the retention clock starts is different based on the category of records. So. Yeah, so this is again, essentially the uh, the construct of the, the construct of the um, uh, of the retention schedule. Um, again, the goal is to try to, you know, make it, uh, make it a little, make it uh, simple for each of the groups to be able to go out to their specific tab and then be able to thumb through and take a look at the various types of records um, that they utilize. So, again, this is uh, the uh, um, sort of what the, how the schedule is built. So, I'll stop here. Any questions or, or thoughts?
No, not at this point. I would like, uh, just like you had in the, in the policy or somewhere where it's mentioned that the other departments may have their, other than B O C C departments may have their own retention schedules. Uh, and those need to be followed according to their own policies and procedures as well.
Yep, fair enough. Okay. And, and one thing I wanted to mention too is the next step, as we sort of uh, have finalized, or at least this version, as I mentioned at the outset, the retention schedule is really a dynamic, sort of living, breathing kind of uh, document. As a part of the contractual arrangement, our team, the Iron Mountain team, will be uh, monitoring or, um, you know, uh, laws and regulation changes and doing any updates to the schedule, um, you know, as a part of our service. So we'll work with the project team to determine, you know, what that best um, time period interval would be. Are we updating it, you know, once per year, um, you know, twice per year, whatever that, the right, um, you know, cadence is to be able to do that. So that's sort of our next step um, in, in the process around the retention schedule.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you for your time today. We appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. Thank you all as well. Appreciate the uh, opportunity to meet with you all.
Okay, have a good day.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, there is no citizen participation. If there are no board comments in your business, I'll make motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I recall Public Improvements and Infrastructure Committee meeting to order all three districts present. Notice the meeting is properly posted on October thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Item number one, is there a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, item number two, TIF two and TIF two A budget. Stacy informed me there are no changes. So, there is uh, we will move on to the next item. Item number three, capital improvements list. I was also informed there are no changes. As we'll move on to departmental items. Owners rep report on ARPA projects. Mr. Bill.
Good morning. Uh, it is morning still.
I'm just beginning to wonder.
Uh, obviously the work in the annex elevators, sorry, the elevators has been delayed. The county is in receipt of some asbestos abatement quotes, so we'll hopefully get that started. Stacy informed me probably early November is the goal. Uh, I don't know, Keith or, but that's sort of where we're at right now on the annex elevators.
How are those looking in terms of the quotes? Is it kind of where we anticipated? Do you know? No? Oh, great. I don't want to hear about that.
And uh, Metro one and two is we got, um, so that's been accelerated. Uh, those will finish earlier than anticipated. We may put the elevators back in service prior to the final um, uh, finishes being installed because they're a little bit behind our original schedule. So, we'll take care of those and, and. But the main thing is, we've got Coney's crews progressing on our elevators uh, in a little different order than our. in a little different order than original. They're comfortable right now with their schedule if we can get going on that annex asbestos. Fifth floor is going very well. We're still looking for an early January completion. I don't know if you've been up to the fifth floor, but they've done, it's, it's going very well. Those, those photographs I took a week ago are outdated, so it's going very well. And I anticipate early January finish and possibly slightly sooner. The front entrance, we're finishing up the first abatement on the exterior wall and the second abatement. We've scheduled with the sheriff's department on how we're gonna do the front entries and entry into the building during moving the front door. So we're gonna move the front door to the, they'll do the west side first. Once it's completed, we'll use the west side and then do the east side. And we have a, a plan for that.
What's the timeframe on that?
Probably right now, early March for total completion with the abatement.
But, yeah, but moving the door that you're talking about?
Oh, probably a month and a half or so. Well, we gotta get the abatement done and then we'll start working there. Try not to move anything we've got up right now. Get it complete, open it up and move to the other side.
December first should be our target right now, is what it sounds like. Okay.
And we'll work, we'll also work around the jury dates a little bit. I think there's a December third or December sixth jury date that will probably not upset the apple cart for that one. And try to use what we have right now, get past that jury date and then make the transition. Behavioral health is progressing. We're doing steel erection, binon deck, masonry, concrete. The contaminated, contaminated soil is complete. It's been back billed. We're doing accounting on that for final, final invoicing, but we should be right on track for our original proposal. So it's gone, that's gone well. Existing jail HVAC we have, we're still complete. We have one controller, we're waiting on some parts. When we did the testing, we'll get that done, but it's, it's also complete. The jail is predominantly ninety-nine percent done. We're trying to get the final Eback and testing. Software complete and we have one controller, one electronic controller that we need to take care of. And that's been ordered and is coming in.
Okay. Any question? Thank you, Bill. All those in favor?
Okay, item number five, update on the meeting with Citizens Bond Oversight Advisory Board. They have not met my knowledge, so it would be no update, no action on number five. Number six, discussion possible action regarding October Budget Board Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four zero zero eight. Capital projects budget detail for projects funded from capital improvements regular fund twenty ten. Jessica.
Hello there. So I gave each one of you a document, you should have it, Charles, that has the updated closeout list. What is different versus what it was put on the agenda was there was a change made to the column of which are the dates. Instead, when I received it from the clerk, it was the currency, so just a minor adjustment there.
So do we need to move to receive?
Yes, both these documents, yes, both the budget and in this document, listing the closeout.
So I moved to receive these two documents?
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So as you will see, there is a projects budget detail. We worked together since September in order to identify projects since two thousand seventeen that were still open. We went through as a team and closed those projects, made sure that there wasn't any current activity on them. So that way we could real, reallocate those dollars back to the unallocated line item. So that way you'd be able to fund future projects. Among those items that were closed out on this list, there were two that had a negative balance. The two that had a negative balance was the courthouse eleventh floor stairwell egress, which is C zero zero seven three. There was a negative balance of five thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. And so when we closed out the list and then whenever we reviewed the, the new budget, that amount was out, was accounted for in the future budget to be approved. So that way we could reconcile the budget. Same thing goes for the courthouse security improvement, C zero zero eight zero. We needed to increase it by seventeen thousand one hundred fifteen-two dollars and twenty cents in order to close or balance that project. We are gonna remain it, have it remain open in case there are any additional improvements that need to be made. But at this time, this will just bring that amount to zero.
As is the stairwell, it remains open as well.
Correct.
You're just shoring it up, correct?
Just shoring it up. There are still funds encumbered on that line item and so this will just help us reconcile. After we closed out all of those projects, we were able to put back to the unallocated fund eight hundred forty thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. What I need from the committee today is approval for us to go through and clean up the capital budget, projects budget. And what that would look like is in this document, we would close out all of the annex juvenile courthouse jail technology projects that now can be closed and reallocated to unallocated funds. And of course, perform what we just discussed in regards to increasing the balance for the two line items that will remain in the future budget that will be approved this week. This will allow for us to be able to put all of these line items on budget board for Thursday to be accepted. So we can accept that final budget.
Is there a motion?
And just to be clear, you said you went back to twenty seventeen. I see there's a twenty fourteen item on here. My question is just, there's not any other older capital project accounts out there? This, this is the end all?
This is it.
Okay, right.
Yeah, a lot of work, a lot of appreciation to all those involved that helped us be able to identify. One of the things that was requested by members that were part of that, those meetings was the historical document. Paul had mentioned that it'd be nice to have a historical document that is a running document of all the projects that we've had. And so this goes back to two thousand seventeen. And so as every year we close out capital projects and keep a fresh list, we will add it to this document. So that way we have a historical reference.
Perfect. So we'll be seeing you once a year moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do you want to make the motion? I'll, I'll make the motion to accept this and to clean up the accounts as you have outlined in this document.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will make a note. I didn't know if I put it on two agenda items or this was the same. The capital budget detail that you, was also added to this agenda? Is this on a new agenda or was it the same?
It was on the agenda.
Okay, it was on the agenda. So just want to make sure I also reference that the final reconciled budget that is attached to the agenda. And I have a copy of one if you guys would like to receive it, if you don't have one in front of you. You got it?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So on the capital projects budget detail, this is what, this is it cleaned up. This is, you know, those two projects, you know, to where we have it balanced and all the projects that we're currently working on. And so whenever we closed out those projects and then when they recreated the budget, we went ahead and allocated based off of the estimate of need for this year, the three hundred thousand dollars for the capital projects as needed. The hundred thousand dollars for the insurance deductible and the fifty thousand dollars for the annex carpet. So those items were moved from the unallocated funds up to line items to which were already approved at budget board. And that left a balance of unallocated funds of five hundred six thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents that can be used towards other projects moving forward.
Care to mention the two hundred and seventy-five thousand that will be coming back from the insurance?
Yes, thank you. So because we had a, a loss, we had a flood recently in the courthouse. We moved from previous capital funds as needed, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the line item for the Oklahoma County courthouse flood. That was fronted in order to be able to pay for two contracts with Coney, a contract for ninety thousand and another contract for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We should receive the insurance settlement within the next seven to ten days. And I would make that recommendation in order to put the two seventy-five back into unallocated, two hundred and seventy-five thousand back into unallocated for future use. Once that's received.
So if my math is correct, when and if that happens, then the balance will be seven eighty-one, seven seventy-nine? Is that correct?
Sounds right. The only other thing to mention, and I was just talking with Cody prior to this meeting as chairman of BET and that with the insurance deductible and depreciation, whenever we had the courthouse flood, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that line item. Of course, we moved that hundred and fifty thousand up to the courthouse flood line item in order to pay for a portion of our deductible. Our deductible for that peril, that loss was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so whenever it was budgeted in the estimate of need this year, it was only budgeted for a hundred thousand, which is what you see now in this current report. And so I, I would ask for, you know, what your recommendation is, if we should just leave it at a hundred thousand? And then when I talked to Cody about possibly moving it into the county commissioners general government fund along with the insurance, where we pay the insurance policy, he said that, that would be possible, but maybe we keep it here because if we have a loss, that we would end up funding it in probably one of these projects anyways. And so I know we had talked about that. So either way, but I do agree with Cody that that, we could probably keep it here since we'd have to move it up to the line item anyways in order to pay for any construction that's needed. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had talked about possibly putting in general government.
Next year's EON will have to allocate two fifty instead of.
Correct, yes. So next year, two fifty, so that way we cover and keep it within the capital projects budget.
Okay. So what action, are you wanting action for us on this document here?
So no action needed for this document. This, I just wanted you to see what the clean version was and what you had available now for unallocated funds. Once everything is moved at budget board, after your approval and recommendation today to allow for me to, for us to create those line items, then next months will reflect the changes that we, that we just made.
Thank you for all the time that you and others have put into this. I know it's been a lot of hours.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It was a collaborative group effort, so I appreciate the teamwork.
Item number seven, discussion possible action regarding courthouse ninth floor HVAC to accept or reject proposal.
So we sent this project out to bid and the purchasing office would like for us to have a conclusion. And so I added this on to the agenda in order to reject or accept the, the one proposal that we received.
I'd just say as far as district two, we have mainly because of the cost associated with it, we don't have interest in moving forward with it at this time.
Okay, can you repeat that again?
Yeah, just because the cost of the, of the project, we just don't have any interest in proceeding with it at this time.
Yeah, that cost is a lot. And I actually do want to hear from Keith about some alternatives that I think may be suitable. Oh, okay. No, number eight, possible?
Gonna talk about that with, with, yeah, eight, well, what is, Keith, what is the difference, I'm sorry, between eight and twelve when they're both regarding funding?
So we had put this on the agenda in order to reject or accept the bid. And then if you chose to reject the bid, then we wouldn't need to have the discussion for funding, but.
Eleven through fourteen are duplications and can be omitted.
Those were the duplications.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Charles.
Aye.
Okay, then I will make a motion to reject the proposal from Orca Mechanical Contractors for the ninth floor HVAC.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Before we move on, Keith just said on this, your proposal was for the entire ninth floor? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. What we went out to bid for was a design build HVAC solution for the ninth floor of the courthouse in its entirety. And.
Okay, don't go anywhere. So if we've moved on from seven, I just would move to strike number eight on things that are irrelevant now, correct?
Well, twelve, eleven through fourteen, we will end up striking. Eight, you said a proposal for funding, so did you have a different idea with regard to the?
Had item, had item seven been approved, we would have had to have some discussion as to how that would be funded. And that's the reason for item number eight. Since seven has been rejected, item number eight is no longer necessary.
Okay. Then there is a motion to strike number eight. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those duplicates were just an error, I guess, in Legistar and why they're, they were added.
Okay, item number nine, discussion possible action regarding courthouse handicap elevator replacement to accept or reject proposal. And this is from, who is the?
This one is from Thompson General Contractors. This is the proposal for the ADA handicap elevator and the amount, only received one for eighty-four thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and forty-three cents.
Keith, do you have any input on this?
This, this is, this is again, a design build effort where the contractor is responsible for using an architect or engineers necessary to complete the project. This approach I like because the designer, architect or mechanical engineer bears some responsibility for project success at the onset. That's worked out well in one other roofing application for us. And I think this will work out well in, in this, on this project too. It troubles me a little that we only received one bid, both for the ninth floor HVAC and for this elevator replacement. I would prefer, and I know purchasing would too, to see way more interested parties giving us bids for the work. The elevator, however, elevator project came well within some estimates that we had been given as to, as to what to expect. So this company is good, they have good reputation. They assure us they can do what we need to have done so that we may meet ADA compliance for access into the courthouse.
So is there a motion to accept or reject the proposal from Thompson General Contractors?
I would move to accept it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm guessing Jessica will put this on BOCC agenda officially, yeah?
And number ten, this would be proposal for funding the courthouse handicap elevator replacement.
Okay, so this, this item is to discuss how you would like to fund the ADA elevator. And I know that with the quote coming in at the eighty-four thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and forty-three cents, Keith had also wanted to include possible dollars for change orders. What was the amount that you wanted? What was the amount that you wanted?
Fifteen percent of the contract price, so make it even a hundred thousand dollars.
So we would ask for a hundred thousand dollars for the ADA.
And with the fifteen percent, uh, came in lower than what our initial estimates were, uh, I would make a motion to make a recommendation to budget board to take this, the hundred thousand out of capital improvement regular fund twenty ten.
Any thoughts on that at all?
We have the funds available.
Yeah.
Okay, second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And I'll put this on budget board for.
Okay, so we are striking items eleven through fourteen. Is there a motion to do so?
Uh, so move to strike eleven through fourteen agenda items.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And there's no sus, participation, uh, there are no board comments or new business, so make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Advisory Committee to order all three districts present. Advisory Committee to order all three districts present. Notice the meeting was properly posted on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item number one, is there a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two, owners rep report on PBA ARPA projects. Bill.
Okay, good afternoon. The, uh, emergency ops, uh, thirty-seventh street's complete. Um, the progress on the, uh, sheriff's portion is going well for twelve thirty-one twenty-six. With the inclusion of the, uh, software and low voltage for emergency management, ABL contract, we'll probably stretch into January a little bit for, um, the installation. Uh, so we can turn over to, uh, emergency management a completed project. So we're incorporating, um, their work at the same time with Lingo, trying not to do anything twice. So it'll probably extend into January. Um, everything else is going extremely well. Uh, if you, as a photograph show, putting up steel, it's, it's, I think we're on track for a, a, a pretty good project completion early. And, um, things are going well there. On the elevators, we'll just, I'll just touch on them. ICB, uh, they're about ninety-five percent done. They need permanent power, um, so it'll finish early. It'll finish way before March. And Metro one and two, as we discussed before, will finish early also. Um, the, uh, ICB remodel, um, we're working on the, uh, horizontal and vertical impacts, uh, the engineers have completed their work, the architects have completed their work. The shop drawings are being revised to accommodate, um, the different points, uh, that we discovered. Uh, we also have solutions for the, uh, little bit of structural rework. Uh, some photographs you've seen, we had some voids in the columns and the beams that were taken care of. Uh, and those are also all been engineered and completed. Uh, we're waiting for, uh, confirm some price updates from Lingo for that work. I don't think it'll be excessive, but we'll have a few, uh, minor structural, um, updates for the uncovered, uh, deficiencies.
So, so all the columns are uncovered now, so that's all?
It's, it's about, it's about ninety percent, I believe. I haven't been over there today.
Yeah.
At the time of this report, uh, I wrote it up, it wasn't, but I haven't been over there today.
It's pretty much all discovered now, so we've done all the ramifications of what needs to be shored up.
Right, yeah. And the, um, engineer has given us, uh, paths forward on how to correct them. So we're in good shape on that. If you haven't been over there, a lot of metal studs have gone up, uh, since I took the photographs, uh, so they're doing very well. Uh, the ARPA portion should be done of, of the project should be done well in front of November tenth. Um, so really that's, that's where we stand on those projects. Done pretty well. Pretty happy.
We were discussing earlier, you said there's probably about a, a month left of demo. Is that correct?
Yeah, a few weeks of, uh, probably a little bit more soft cutting and demo for the final stairs and a couple of, uh, uh, the walls replaced.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
I'm going to receive report.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.